Everybody to the Board of Selectmen meeting Tuesday, May 7th, 2024. Agenda is 7:00 PM. It's in person and virtual at the Town Hall. And I'd like to call this meeting to order. And first, I'd like to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited to any judgments. Okay, thank you. So next on the list is public comment. And we'd like you to limit your comments to three minutes. Limit the redundancy of commenting. Is there anybody who would like to make a comment at this point?
I would. Would you stand forth a little closer to the microphone, Ms. Janine?
Scary.
Or you can hold your chair.
Do you want to do a chair?
Yeah.
So I'm Janine, Janine Galeno, 28 Anger Road from Vernon, Connecticut. So we have a couple of things that are different that we want to speak to you about from the last time. So these are additional things. So when the sewers went in, this is the Cubles Drive talk. I was president of the Lake Association. And Bob and I, Laura, and I worked with a team of lawyers trying to determine who owned those roads out there. Because some of them were owned by us in the 50s, but then so many things had changed over the years. So in the end, ownership was never clear. So instead of signing for road ownership, we both signed to allow the work to take place because the sewers are mandated. You had to get them in. You have to okay it. So what we don't understand is now we're being told we actually own a tiny portion of a full road. So there's a road called Cubles, and we own supposedly just 64 yards right in the middle of the road. Let's do it. So I've been here for over 20 years now, and this section of road has always been cared for by the two towns, Vernon and Bolton. So now we're kind of wondering why the sudden change. We had a pothole problem. We called, people didn't want to help. Okay? So we don't know why it's different now. In the past, during the 20 years, we probably only had one other pothole where we called it got fixed. I don't know honestly by which town, but it got done. So the other thing is too, today I spoke with the Vernon Public Works, and I just confirmed that Vernon actually does in fact own Cubles. Okay? They're up to the town line. So there's a tiny portion over the town line that is Bolton. And that's the 64 yards that I'm talking about, or roughly, you know, the size of half of a football field. Okay? And so to be clear, we're not asking you to take over the entire road because most of the road's already taken over by the town of Vernon. It's only just this 64 yards. And we don't care whether it's owned by us, by you. We don't care about the name of ownership. It's just that we can't be the ones responsible for the maintenance liability, any of these kind of things. A little big Bolton Lake Asshores Association can't because, as I said the last time, we don't have any control over this road at all. Okay? So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, River. Yes?
Lori Bernier, 50th Avenue Drive in Bolton. I'm just going to go off of the kind of the idea about this road. It's a thoroughfare. The emergency vehicles use it, the snowplows use it, the cars use it. Anybody whose kids goes to Camp Nahoko, you're going to drive down it. And everybody uses the road. The school buses in both Bolton and Vernon use Cubles Drive. Now, according to the bus company, and Bolton uses M&amp;J, they will not allow the public school buses on a private road unless they need to pick up a special needs student. And in that case, they would send a small bus. These are full-size buses that travel down the road. And in Bolton, it's bus number 1470 or 1469. It's, oh, sometimes that must not working. It's like school bus route two. It's a paper number. It's a big bus that makes a circular route that picks up a lot of kids. It comes by at 650, 750, 250, and 350. So these are big, full-size buses that the bus company must assume they're traveling on a public road as opposed to 64 yards of a private road. Because according to the bus company, their buses can't be on private roads, not their big buses. So again, it's just confusing for all of us that and it acts like a public road. It looks like a public road. It was paved at some point. We have private roads, the top of Colonial, Juniper, Sunningdale. Bolton doesn't pave them. Well, Cubles has been paved in the past at some point. So there's everything about it that looks like a public road except for now in 2024, 2023, these 64 yards are private. And it just seems odd. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I wrote down what I did say. If you want, we pass it in, a couple of copies.
Oh, yeah, if you would. I appreciate that. Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Okay, then we're going to move forward to number three. Correspondence. Is there any correspondence? I didn't see any in the packet.
No, I don't believe there is any.
So.
At this time, Mr.?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we change the order of the agenda to accommodate those of our guests that are here this evening. And I would suggest that make a motion that we move number four down to between number seven and eight on the agenda.
Do I have a second?
I will second the motion.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? I have seven, zero in favor of relocating number four to number seven and a half. So now we'll go to number five, which is ongoing business. And that's 5A is to consider and possibly act on Cubles Drive. So the ask is that we, Town of Bolton takes over Cubles Drive, 263 yards or whatever it is. And we would have to take over responsibility of the actual road to make sure that it meets town conditions. And there would be quite a bit of legal fees involved, I believe. And there must be some type of, you know, I guess you wanted to quickly define the land over, which I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know what that means. I assume it's supposed to be a simple form. We'd have to make it meet town standards, which means we need 50 feet wide. And I don't know. Does anybody have any other comments? Or are we going to make a motion here?
Sure. All right. I, a couple of things on the, this is a, it may seem a simple issue. It is a bit complex issues. It's precedent and ownership. And one of the points, an interesting point that Janine brought, maybe we should hang.
That's fine.
Brought up. Oh, no, you brought it up. I'm sorry. Somebody brought it up about, and I never thought about this, but the repaving was done by a sewer worker. That was not a town. But the original paving, I don't know.
It was done quite a few times.
Well, the question is, who did? And that's, and why bring that up? Because I think before this board makes any action, I think, well, it's one of the things, that historical point might be critical as to what decisions are made. And I would, I think it's important, we have to look back and see, who did this? Who did the town originally pave? I don't know. I mean, I went on, it would have been before me. Not that that's ancient history, but.
Mr. Moore was for Selectmen for 18 years.
But it would have been, it would have been a time for, I would think there's got to be something. At least, I would not feel comfortable making a decision on anything until at least have a chance to look at it. If in fact, the town, the town de facto did it and maintained it. I don't know. You know, we'd have to look back.
And wasn't Bolton Lake Asshores, that's all I.
Well. I'm not suggesting it was, but I'm not, I just don't know who or what. But I think, this is me, but I think for me, I can't make a decision until at least that, that's a pretty critical question for me. And I think we need to answer that. So, and we also have a chance for a subcommittee to sit down and go over the C, because we've been eyeballs in budget and a lot of other issues. But I think this is my thought to the board is, let's bring this to the subcommittee to redo it. And also give, not to give Jim another job, but maybe I'll have to try and think back in records and even try and speak to some of the people who might have been involved in things here. If we can get some information as to where, or some documentation. I don't know. I mean.
We can walk. I mean, we can, we can talk to.
Previous.
Retired Public Works Director.
Right. Just to get some.
To get some perspective.
At least to get some perspective.
And I could be misremembering, but what I remember from conversations with our former highway foreman prior to his retirement is that, that we don't even file that section that Vernon paused. And so my suspicion is that Vernon maybe had been the one to pave it initially.
Maybe.
We might be able to find that out.
I can, well, as part of my side of the investigation, I will contact the foreman prior to his last foreman. So I have the ability to do that. He's retired, so that'll go back quite a long time.
Vernon used to oil the roads and then put down stone.
Yeah.
This is that.
Don't allow.
Well, it's on here now. Now you can, right. But you know, it's, don't these towns get subsidized money for helping maintain these roads, Bolton and Vernon? Who's getting the money?
So we don't allow comment from the audience during our discussion. Sorry, but I know how tempting it is out there.
One last question. What is the procedure?
No.
Why wouldn't they get put on the agenda? Because we've had this discussion and.
We know, but we didn't meet as.
Can't tell us what the procedures.
We didn't meet as a subcommittee. And this meeting could go on all night if you keep asking questions.
How do they get on the agenda? If they want to be on the agenda, it's so much that can be discussed and back and forth.
Once you're on the agenda, then it's up to us.
How do you get onto the agenda?
It's up to us to put it back on.
They were never on the agenda. They were just a public forum.
Is there any other comments on this point?
Yeah, I would like to know what the downside of accepting this section of road is regardless of who paved it originally. I don't really see why that matters so much. I think we should be focusing on what is the burden that the town is taking on to pave, while maintaining a hundred.
If we're honest, we should have the rates closed.
So.
So I guess I'd like to hear people's opinion about what the downside is because I don't, I don't, I don't hear a downside. I haven't heard a downside.
Can I respond? Yes, go ahead.
You may be right. Since I've been involved with this thing a long time, so, and go back to the issues that we look at. And that is, the town has numerous private roads, which some are dead end, some are literally one cow, yeah. Probably the town path wide, but a car path wide and all our rights of ways. And the only thing the town does with these, and particularly around the lake, is they, if, if the snow is over certain amount, they will plow it so to allow fire trucks and emergency vehicles there. And that's, and that's it. Never made, they don't maintain them in any way, shape, or form. The question that we dealt with in the past was, if you do one, opens the gate to every other one, every other person that owns one of these will insist that the town brings their road up to standard and pays it. And that's, 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 that's always, that's, that's always an underlying issue here. And that has to be considered in all our decisions. To me, that's why it's important to historically go back. If the town de facto did maintain it, well, it changes things.
And in response to that, the, there might be a distinction between this section of this road, which is a thoroughfare versus other private roads, which are just like dead ends where, you know, we've only got the four houses or whatever on it. So I do see a distinction there if, where the town might not want to get into a situation where you're giving a benefit to a small neighborhood where there wasn't a benefit before versus this is just, this is a route that's used by school buses. It's used by people traveling to Vernon. So I think, I think it's a little bit of a difference.
Yeah, so that's why I'm sorry. Rodney had pointed it back to committee because there's multiple aspects to talk about. I'm going to keep quiet. I've said my, my opinion. Pam, Amanda, you want to go?
I just had a question because I believe in talking with the people that live in that neighborhood, that the Colonial Drive, that, well, it's on the map, it shows up as a road, but it's really not a road in that section. It looks like more dirt grass, whatever. And it comes to a perpendicular head with Cubles. Is that owned by you guys as well, or is that a different owner?
That used to be an open used road years ago when I was a kid. Fed into Rosedale and all that.
That is not.
I don't think.
Okay, it's not under you guys. Show my, show my, show my.
I can, I can tell you in a second. I talked to.
Oh, excuse me. Yeah.
Didn't she, yeah?
I just wanted to know if you guys, it's all right if it's not you guys. We can look it up. Thank you, Bill.
Pam?
I am leaning in favor of sending it back to committee because I am looking favorably at all these issues as a piece of neglected property road in the town that could be assumed by the, by the town with some legal work done. And I think that's important to note because it's going to be some legal work done on the basis of what the town side has to do. But what these, the owners of the, what we think are the owners of the particular road piece is, we have a town road on one side. We have a town road on the other. It happens to be two different municipalities, but this is a forgotten stretch that has been neglected. And I think it needs to be taken over because we need it for safety and we need it for school usage. And we can then have it at the standard to which we expect it to be. But that's my initial review of this. And at this time, I would make a motion that we send it back to committee so some of these other answers, questions can be answered. And then we bring it back at another meeting. This time I make that motion.
Is there any discussion on this motion?
Yeah, just a clarification. With sending it to the committee would allow us to create a path forward to a solution, right? That would, that would be the goal of the committee. So flesh out all the, all the considerations, figure out what, what hurdles exist, and figure out how to come up with a plan to bring forward for action.
What hurdles we have and what hurdles they will have.
Okay. I think that would make sense.
Because road standards are such that we would be easements on everybody's properties and all kinds of stuff. And who's going to come up with the money to pay for the improvements? Because there's, there's no curves, there's no skirts on these roads. It's just, it's just a road.
It's like there's a variance in residency in there.
Not, not Bolton. So anyways, the, that would all have to be discussed in the committee and come up with an answer for that. So is there any other discussion? So all in favor? All right. It's seven, nothing. Motion moves forward. Bring it to the committee and we'll review it some more. Come up with some questions.
Mr. Chairman, the committee meeting will be published so people can know when the subcommittee is meeting.
That's correct. And it's a meeting just like this, only four people instead of three. Of the facility, yes. Yeah, yeah. So it's only three or four of us instead of seven. So.
How did the board, we talked back at that point? Is there ever a meeting where the two groups can speak to one?
That would, you could start. With a limited discussion, we could do that. Otherwise, a meeting could go on all night long.
I understand.
And where's all volunteer.
You have some boundaries to it, but.
Any of you people ever been on that road?
I have. I remember going down there.
I followed that and I followed other stinkin' little road.
I love the scene closed, so monitor that goes through there and the way the people drive through there.
That's recent that's happened, since they paved it, you made it.
It's made it worse. It's been getting bad for years.
Yeah.
But all those people living there.
We had to stop them on Cubles. And you should camp out in my yard. See them. Don't say that. Not all the people live in Vernon. There's people from Rosedale, Town Road, 44, Manchester.
We should move on. So.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry. I should not be conversant. That's okay. I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
So, all right. Now, next on the agenda is discussion on Enrico Road. Thank you all for coming.
Can I just say, also, you mentioned that the road has to be 50 feet.
We're moving on to another.
We have plenty of roads out there. And that's what is paved. That's where the sewer is, that's where the toll gets paid. You're never going to get a 50-foot road unless you want 50-foot road and hitting a 25-foot road. It's not going to happen.
Is it okay if we leave?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We're.
We're out of your hair.
We move on to another discussion.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for all your concerns. We'll do the best we can. Thank you. Okay, so now, Enrico Road.
Mr. President, I'm going to refuse myself from the discussion.
Okay.
Separate myself.
Okay. Is there anybody who would, so actually, we're not looking to make a motion to do anything in particular. We're just going to discuss this letter that we received from the town's attorney. And what our options are, is what our path forward will be, think about. I believe it was posted on the.
Email.
On the, was it?
It was email, but it's not public.
It, it, no, it's not public unless you choose to make it public.
Oh, okay.
It's, yeah.
Okay.
So attorney's privacy privileges are because of, because of pending.
Oh, that's right.
Criminal litigation, that's.
Yeah, okay. I apologize. So is there any comments on this? Before we make a motion, or some?
Well, no.
No, no motion.
No, this is an issue that is, all the ramifications of it besides just a legal opinion, that was presented to the previous board, that frankly, in fairness to all the parties here, should be presented to this entire board so that everybody here can hear what the various sides, what, what their positions are. Let's put it that way. Because I think it's, it's important, it is for me, so to make a decision since I know most of the parties involved. And whatever decision we make, I think it should be one that has considerable thought. And, but, but instead of just us talking about it, I think it'd be important to have, is it, was the hearing recessed? Or did we end it that we could reconvene or hold a new hearing?
I think we, I think we continue it, but I think one of the, I think one of the issues that is different than when you heard the argument the first time is there's now, there are three parties involved and, and all parties have legal representation. So there may be perspectives from both sides that.
We haven't heard.
Want, want to be heard. And I don't know if there's new developments or not. But I think you're right. I think the right thing to do is to, you know, find a time when, you know, the parties can come back before the board with its new makeup and, you know, present their information, their cases, if you will, and allow the board to have all of the information possible and make their decision.
We could do it also, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
We could also do it in the form of a public hearing. So other members of the community could weigh in as well. We are making, we are looking at a decision that is town property, not just property of.
That line.
Of board. And jurisdiction isn't just, it's for, there's certain issues that have to come forward before a possible board. So we may want to consider having a public hearing, allowing presentation of both sides and then opening it up to the public if they want.
Do you think that would eliminate the need for an additional public hearing after? Or, no, that wouldn't eliminate that.
So I guess we'd have to look at, we'd have to go back and look at our minutes and determine whether or not we continued it.
It would recessed.
Because if you.
I have it.
Yeah, it was recessed.
But if you continued it, then I don't think you can now convene a public hearing.
Yes, you could. You could close out the hearing, like close out the first one, and you can reconvene a second hearing.
The first one was not, the first thing was not a hearing. It was a special meeting of the.
Of the board.
So I think you'd have to finish one action and start a clearing to start a new action.
So first, we'd have to finish.
Is there an interest for the board to do it that way?
To have a public hearing?
Yes.
We have to have a public hearing no matter what we do so we could get that over with in one shot and everybody be part of it.
I believe so.
I think would be a good idea. Is there consensus on that?
When we've done it, when we've had issues with, I'm sorry, my phone's bad. We've had issues, say, with the DOT or certain things. We've had issues over whether or not we're going to do sewers, those types of things. And you bring in the parties, the parties speak first for informational and persuasive discussion.
Right.
Or persuasive argument. It's not meant to go back and forth usually, but the board does retain the right to ask questions. And then you can open it up then to public comment.
Kind of like that thought.
Would you like a motion then to close?
Amanda, go ahead.
Yeah, I just had a question. If we had any idea if this similar scenario could pop up anywhere else in town? Like, do we have this right of way anywhere else where like we would be setting a precedent with this decision?
So to answer your question, I know of other situations where there are stubs that continue. There, there's another one on Enrico Road.
But there's no maintenance on that. There's nothing.
No, but, but there are, there are a number of them.
There's a, there's a number.
There's a number of them. And, and over the years, when they did these, they put them there. That's why I think decisions have to, have to keep all that involved in what we do.
When I just asked, because it just speaks to a broader public interest.
Well, that, no, that's a good question. It's a fair question because most people would not know that. I mean, it's simply not common knowledge if you would figure that out. But over the years, I don't need to jump in this. But me and the old guy that's had a deal with this stuff before, they, they have existed. And until something unique comes up, they just sit there. The, the original concept, and I do recall that zoning board put this actually together was that when they, it really has to go with subdivisions with, you know, that whoever the property owner was in the back could allow access to go forward. Should, should the, if someone buy and want to develop. Should, should the, uh, someone buy him on the building in the back. And so they believe a fifty-foot area could be extended out to go back. Whether or not the land was even, uh, developable at all, but that, that's the, the thought process. And that probably goes back fifteen years.
All right.
Who was involved with it.
Is there any other comments, Tim?
Who's coming?
Amanda?
Uh, the only thing I'd like to add to this is, uh, we have, um, only a few options. And one is that we do nothing, which is gonna anger one party. We can abandon the property, at which point there's unknown, uh, things of not, involved with that. We could put the property up for sale, which there's things known with that as well. Um, or, uh, what was our fourth option?
Is there a fourth option?
Or you, or you could continue the process you started to reach a decision.
So.
And we could uphold the original denial.
Right, there's, there's actually five, five options there, yeah.
Right.
I'm sorry, I think we had the one.
Uphold the original denial is another option.
That's another fifth option.
Um, so, oh, we wanna set a date for this?
Well, Mr. Chairman.
We need a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Um, I think the way to do it would be to get the date to be able to put it into the motion to close out the other special meeting.
Okay, so at our next.
We need that.
At our next special.
At our next, at our next meeting.
Okay.
We could make the motion then to close out.
That.
The former, so that date.
Yeah.
And that gives us time to look at a calendar as well.
Right.
And set up a public hearing date.
Okay.
And not just do it off our cuff.
So that's probably the next, uh.
The AP meeting.
Yeah. Which is, we got an action along with everything else.
The twenty-first.
So I, I will just remind us all, if you don't mind, about that when we set a date for the next meeting to discuss this issue, that we told both parties, we will give them at least two weeks advance notice. So, we would wanna set it at least two weeks out from.
Today's May seventh, the twenty-first.
Well, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be two weeks out from today, right? It would be two weeks out from whenever we close out the other action.
So we need the next.
At least two weeks.
AP meeting?
Yeah.
There we go.
So we can put that on the agenda.
Pull it out, send, and then.
And make motion.
Is that gonna be our next meeting? Our next regular meeting?
It could be, but it does, we don't have to have it on that date.
We wouldn't wanna have it on.
We would have it, we'd take another date, but at least.
Yeah, two weeks.
You want to accept.
Further than that.
This, I, I imagine this will take an entire evening, so I don't think you wanna have other agenda homes that.
To close this out, or?
To close it out is a fairly simple.
And that we wanna do at our next.
You could do that.
We can schedule the twenty-first, okay? And then the public hearing meeting, we wanna schedule somewhere in between there and our next meeting, correct?
No.
No. Do you have?
These two weeks out from me.
Minimum.
Two weeks out from there.
Minimum of two after the twenty-first.
Three weeks, you, you have.
Three or four, and, and doesn't have to be out two days.
Yeah, with.
Okay.
But we have to look at the town calendar and see what rooms are filled.
Things going on, and, and what's fair to the, the individuals involved too.
The different parties.
Okay.
If one of their attorneys is not involved in a case, they can't appear or something, or whatever. I mean, yep, we, we should be provided a date.
We'll, we'll, we'll work with Burton, try to find a date, but thank you. They, they provided us some dates that they weren't available.
Okay.
And now you said, okay.
So because this is just a discussion, there's no need for an action at the moment?
No, nothing, no.
We.
No action.
Then we need to ask Gwen to come back.
Yeah, Gwen.
Oh.
You're.
No, I thought you stepped out.
You're unrecruited. Okay, now we're gonna consider and possibly act on scope of work for Nacho Municipal Center, uh, which is five C. We have, thank you for coming.
Thank you, man. Special my big night out.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, we have on our agenda, um, six F, uh, discussion on Veterans Commission Monument Request, and we do have still a guest here with us. Former selectman and board member, and now current member of the Veterans Commission and veteran himself, Barry Sterns. Could we move, could we skip ahead to numbers six F to accommodate and?
Yep.
His presence.
Absolutely. Uh, so we're gonna have a discussion on the Veterans Commission Monument, Monument Request, which is six F in your packet.
Will we ask Mr. Sterns, as a commission member, to please come to the table?
You're welcome. Don't worry.
Good. I don't get out much at night. Can we just talk about this?
Yeah.
I don't remember when we were asked to look into this. Swear to the product, those three wars that we're talking about, there's no mention of them anywhere on this document. The, uh. The, um, early United War, the War of Great East Coast, the American Civil War. Probably every other topic, war we've been involved in, is mentioned on that green somewhere, you know, plan. Uh, so we've started looking at it up there, and, and you probably all know, and there you have, like, a grant, mine is your cast items, cast items. I've always been there, but, um, they're on, mounted on big stones, holders. And so we looked at all, all of the, what it was, it's a message for awesome, and the granite monument courses are all suspicious. Uh, the cast blacks will now look like these. The, the industry's changed, the, the weather's worn, so they won't, they won't be able to match, you, you know, it would be cast bronze or cast aluminum. Uh, they're both pretty nice, nice blacks. They are, they do have different colors, you can get them, different, you can do them, but we didn't really get into that. But these are estimates, materials only. Uh, the monument, the granite monument, it would include being placed here. I only want the one monument placed, so I'm sure there's some, if you want that road, you probably could have a bid, so who knows what would happen. With the best commission we got, we talked about, it's decided that, well, we've done what we can do. So, what else needs, decided the bonus selectmen is, decided we wanna go ahead with it. And so, how are you gonna fund it? Where are you gonna put it on the green? Right now, it's pretty symmetrical what's out there, and something, I have no idea where you put this. Plus, these are, I didn't even notice this till one night, I was, these are lit up at night.
Yeah.
They all have lights on them, so that's another thing you'd have to look into. The border color, it's black and, like, it, it comes down, that's where you wanna go. I can get information about what's available, we need some of those things, get a catalog to show you, stuff like that. Um, and then the emblem that we, we see on the one that, that, the granite, it doesn't have to be that, particularly on three flag, it'd be something different too, so. I think that, uh, what we're basically doing now is saying, it's in your, it's in your court now, and you have to decide what's gonna happen.
I noticed on B and C, the flag goes different ones on.
It almost looks like they were done at the same time, but, but when you have it closed out, they were not done at the same time, so. And these are quite, I don't know how old they are, quite old. Matter of fact, the one that is Vietnam, I looked on it, it's a typo, because Vietnam is a war.
I know.
Uh, so, do we have any questions for Barry, or?
Barry, yes.
Yes.
Um, one of the first discussions that was had was to talk about, um, you know, what type of monument there would be, uh, recommended. And, um, one of the thoughts that is not represented here, uh, is monuments of the pillar shape, the small that you see in cemeteries. And as opposed to a larger upright. If we did something smaller like that, it could have each of the conflicts represented on one, stagger them in between. Or put two on one, one on another, the space for future, uh, and this is, I'm saying if it were in granite, future carving for a future conflict. If we decided that there was something that we wanted to put, uh, in regards to the, um, Iraq and Afghanistan or the Gulf War. We decided that we wanted to add something to them, and that if we had two, we could, because they're free now, we could have them forward and smaller and lower. So just as, as an option, um, but I do highly recommend that with an active Veterans Commission, with over six hundred veterans in the town. And a long distinguished history of men and women serving from this town for our nation, to our nation and our state. I say state because of the National Guard, um, and militias back in the day, uh, that we owe it to their memory to do something like this. We do have, I think about seventy thousand dollars in the Founder's Day Fund that was, uh, and when this discussion actually started. What to do with something that would be a lasting, uh, remembrance of the three-hundredth anniversary? This is how, one of the ideas that came forward, uh, to put this out there as a longstanding remembrance and a good way to spend that money, some of those monies. Uh, but Jim will share, I think, that to use that money, you have to have, it's supposed to be wrapped around an event. And we certainly could have a dedication for it, so there's a, a couple more options to do it. And I would like to see it, uh, be recommended that this go to the facilities subcommittee to look at and work further out, for some more details. And bring it back to the board, because I think it's a very positive thing to be an action for this town to take his memorial day. Pretty, pretty positive.
Any other comments, Wayne?
Yeah, how, how interested is the Veterans Commission in being involved in like the, the placement of the stones, of the type of, um, um, plaque and size and all that? Because it seems to.
We did have, um, one, a couple of them, or these are just in the middle of a meeting where they, they mentioned they could probably provide a holder. And then, uh, one of our members, the ability to, the mouties, I don't know, on Nacho, it was, kept it a flat. And he says, he has the ability to do that things.
I think that'd be wonderful.
I can mount it.
You've, you've done some experience.
In my, in my business.
Yeah.
Not a real big job, it's just something.
Well, I think it'd be great to have a golden stone, and it'd be great to have your expertise, and I, I just think that the veterans should be the ones to be bringing, to be expressing their opinions about the style and the emblem on the top of it. I, I mean, that's, that's really, that's, um, those are veterans' decisions to make, in my opinion. So that's why I asked you about the level of interest. If, if the commission members are not interested, then we could do that, but I think it'd be better all of you express your opinion.
There's, there's five members of the commission in total, and it's, it's, uh, we, we have sporadic attendance at our meetings.
So would, do you think the commission would rather have us be making those decisions?
I think so, yes.
Okay. Would you consider being a liaison? I'm sorry, it's Jim.
Subcommittee.
To the subcommittee?
I'm around for a while, so.
Well.
Me too, we'd like to, you know, have a representative.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, I think it's important we do have that involved, and, and that would be, be good to look at, and then.
Our chairman, by the way, was Kathleen Walsh, the chair, she was gonna be, she was gonna sign a get-in, and I, I don't mostly know, she's living in the operating house, because her house is, like, it's soon to come down. Oh, Jason's down, I guess, so.
Crumbling foundation, up and down.
Oh, yeah.
So, you have any other comments?
No, no, I'm just saying, and, and we're probably gonna have to get, I would think, our buildings and grounds person involved, so.
Yeah.
When we're looking at this, frankly, we should look at the whole marine area. If we're gonna make a move, this is a good time to kind of think, how can we enhance it and keep it in, in, in tune to what's there? What, what has turned out to be a, a, a memorial, a, a war memorial.
And I would like to also ask Mr. Chairman that when the subcommittee meets, they also extend an invitation to a historical commission, uh, society, society? Society?
Society.
And ask them if they would like to send a liaison.
John and Jim?
He's, he's chairman, but there are many other members.
Yeah.
They were looking to get money away today. Wonder if they would donate some. We're working that, yeah.
Well, that's a good, that's a good discussion for the subcommittee.
Subcommittee, yeah.
Find out.
We can talk about.
Would you like a, well, then?
Do you have any comments?
No.
No, okay. Amanda, you're good?
Okay.
It's a, it's only a discussion, so.
Right.
But I could make a motion if the board wishes.
To set a date for the subcommittee?
I would just make a motion, Mr. Chairman, I would just make a motion then that we refer the, uh, the issue of special, a special new monument. To go to the facilities subcommittee.
I'll second.
And ask them to report that.
All in favor? Seven-zero, motion passed. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, buddy, thank you.
Back to seven, or five C, Consider a Possible Act on Scope of Work for Nacho Road. Uh, do you wanna, wanna know what that was?
Well, you've been doing, you've been, you've been running around on it for a week or so at this point.
I'm a facilitator.
So our first selectman has reached out to some experts in the area and gotten us a couple of documents that we can use as model documents to, um. Draft the scope of work for the hazardous materials investigation, which would include, um, picking a firm, do the hazardous materials investigation after a site visit. And, um, part of their scope of work would be to oversee the abatement and make sure all the required paperwork was filed with the various agencies, whether that be the EPA, the DEP. Or public health with regard to the hazardous materials. I got that draft document yesterday, and worked on it for a few hours this morning. And I will re-review it with, uh, Mr. Butromovich tomorrow, and then it will be ready to go to the Core Facilities and Public Safety Subcommittee. I feel sorry for that group, it'll be ready to go to that group for review. I guess the question I would have is, you know, is the, is the, whether or not the board of selectmen would be comfortable with that group making decisions? Or whether we're gonna have to come back, uh, for a special meeting of the full board to make decisions to move it forward? Because we do wanna try to move this process along. So that's where we're currently, uh, we'll, we'll get it finished up this week, and as soon as we can schedule a meeting for the Facilities and Public Safety Subcommittee, we'll do that.
Okay, Amanda?
I thought we had waived the bid for the investigate, the hazardous materials. Isn't that what we decided?
We have to get quotes, we gotta have at least three quotes.
So it would just be that, not a formal bid process? I just wanna make sure I'm understanding.
Yeah, what I, what I was referring to, Amanda, was approving the scope of work.
Scope of work, that's all we're doing.
Do we wanna do that at the public, of the Facilities and Public Safety Subcommittee level, or do we wanna bring that back to the full board?
Approving the scope of work for an informal collection of quotes.
That's right.
Not for a bid.
If, right.
Okay.
It would be a formal collection, of course, because once they come in, they.
But I meant like not go out to bid with that scope of work.
Right, so is the committee gonna have the capacity to just move it forward, say, I mean, it's just a, it's a pile of specs.
I really think, I, I, I got this in the back line, I. I really think, I, I, I got this in the back line, and I'm so worried about losing this ARPA money, and the, if we keep passing these things on to, you know, another group of people have to look at it, another committee, another committee, I think we really need to fast track this.
Yes.
And I, I had, I was almost about to say, well, how about Jim and you approve the scope of work, unless everybody doesn't agree with that. The sec, that would be my preference. Second preference would be send it to the Subcommittee. Third, you should not wait until the June meeting, we should not wait a whole month just to get the scope of work out, because then it's gonna be another four weeks before we.
You're absolutely right.
You know, we gotta push on this.
Yeah.
And, and I'm, Jim, I don't know if you ever found out the answer to whether the ARPA funds have to be spent.
Still working on, still working on that.
Oh, I found the, I mean, I got the last guidance from Jill.
Which is, it has to be spent, or it has to be contracted?
No, it has to be allocated, and then it has to be spent by December 30th of 2026.
Okay, good. So we've long. So we've got some breathing room, yeah, but we still need to sign, at least sign a contract by December 30th.
Yeah, all that has to be.
And even that, you know, is going to, we're gonna, the time is going by, so.
I see.
My preference would be to have Jim and Rodney approve the scope of work.
If you make that a motion, I'll be happy to second it, but I'm comfortable with that.
I will move that this board authorize Jim and, well, the town administrator and the first selectman to approve the scope of work to determine the investigation and the oversight of the abatement of the hazardous materials at Notch Road Municipal Center.
Second, any discussion?
Question, so that's only just oversight and investigation, and then we still will have to go out and get three, are we gonna do three informal bids for the actual remediation?
Four A.
So, okay, so.
That's bizarre.
And do you have, do you have any? Depending on the dollar value, it may have to go out, according to our ordinance, I think that's true.
We'll see, right, we'll see if we got, but we don't know yet.
Part of, part of the scope of work for this first company that we will choose will be to develop bid documents for the abatement. They will, they will, yes, part of, part of their scope is anticipated is for them to help us as the owners develop the scope of work for beta, which would potentially include bid documents.
And it'll be based on what they find.
So we would be ready to go out to bid as, once we get their stuff back, which is, that's what we're hoping for.
Right, yeah.
And we could have someone, a company do the abatement and demotion.
Correct.
Oh, yeah, if they, I mean, standard shit.
Right, right. They're usually different people, just.
But you might have a contract.
Right.
Yeah.
It's looking like this is not gonna happen.
I'm not ruling that off.
No.
I'm glad, I'm glad you're optimistic about that.
No, we, this, this is, the actual specs and Jim working on it, it's been pretty aggressive.
Okay.
I think it's.
Yeah, you could have that in a week's time, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Jim has a lot of expertise.
Even if we went to, even if we decide, I like this approach, I think it's perfect for, for what we're doing, thank you for suggesting it, but even if we went to the Facilities and Public Safety Subcommittee, I, I'm really looking within the next 10 or 12 days to be able to get people out there looking at the scope of work and giving us bids, turn around quickly, that's me.
Your intent is just to have an eight to noon opening, and whoever shows up, they'll be guided through, and they'll be looking at the same thing, and with any lock, we'll already have some of the wall open, some.
Yeah, our thought is we'll open some stuff up, so that people could see what's there, right, because part of the, part of the problem we came up with the last time is they're speculating what's behind that wall, or they're speculating what's on the foundation under the dirt. You know, we could knock a brick out, we can dig a hole, so those are things that we can do in advance, so that we really narrow the scope of work as much as humanly possible.
Any other questions?
All in favor?
All in favor? Aye, aye, seven zero. Almost lost that.
I can't remember for you.
Now, moving on to new business, Consider an Act on the Call for Annual Town Meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is something that is done every year, and at this point, I would make a motion that we approve the call for the annual town meeting Thursday, May 16th, 2024. Having said that, we would then sign the call as an entire board, which is before us.
And do we have a second? Amanda, is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye, seven zero, and we'll sign that meeting over.
May I ask a question or make a comment?
Yeah.
So I, I just wanna make sure, like, seeing here that there's the five-year capital improvement plan, right, I just, you know, wanna make sure that all the Board of Selectmen are aware that the Finance Committee did add $500,000, not, $400,000 to the capital budget in some random future projects line item, and so that's, I'm assuming how it would be presented to the public with that 400 in it, or is it going to be presented to the public as it was last approved by the Board of Selectmen?
I would think that it would be approved the way that it was left with the Finance Committee.
That was the last action, right?
That was the last.
Which one's connection?
So the Finance Committee, since we were on it, we, we, we created that, that spot in, in the.
The line item?
Yeah.
Last meeting.
I, I, I can't remember the length of what it is, but it's an all-inclusive things that, all kinds of stuff related to town hall improvements, maintenance, et cetera. Now, we, the Board of Selectmen has to approve that.
Correct.
And we haven't done it, that's something we haven't, that putting that 400,000 into that.
Not on, not on the agenda here.
No, just put it on, you know, the next meeting.
You wanna put it on the AP meeting?
I would put that on there so we could do that.
That'll be after the?
Sixteenth.
It'll be after the town meeting.
This is, this is a regular meeting, so if you would like to add it to the meeting by.
The annual town meeting?
No, this one. This one, but it would take a motion.
I would make a motion then, that we add, under new business G, six G. The addition of.
Consider an act on the approval of the addition of $400,000 to the capital budget in the line item outlined by the Board of Finance.
Made by Amanda, seconded right here.
I'll second that. In all the words, right off her tongue.
Amanda, do you have the language?
Thank you.
What?
Do you have the language that we titled that?
I'm gonna look it up.
Yeah, we, we, thank you, because I have it in my email.
Yeah, was, was part of our motion. All in favor? Seven zero.
So we're at six B, Mr. Chairman?
So six G, it's done. Six B, Consider an Act on Appointing Jim Rupert, the Administrator, to the EHHD Board of Directors and R. Mora as an alternate.
Mr. Chairman?
Eastern Highland Health District, yes.
Chairman, I would make a motion that we appoint James Rupert as the member of the Eastern Highland Health District Board of Directors, and have Mr. Robert Mora be the alternate.
I'll second.
Amanda seconded it, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, seven zero in favor.
Sorry, Bob, we didn't even ask you. You haven't missed a meeting. I rarely ask, I call it a tough burden.
Uh huh, and next, we're considering an act on allowing the EMD to apply for an EMPG Pool Grant, so that's our Emergency Management Director.
It's an Emergency Management Performance Grant, and it's called a Pool Grant.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And it has no match.
I would make a motion that we allow the Emergency Management Director to apply for the EMPG Pool Grant.
Is there a second? Bob seconded that, any discussion?
What is it?
So we are, we are actually, the advocate, so we had two, there were two choices for this grant, and our Emergency Management Director felt that some enhancements to the Emergency Operations Center, which is the space that you were sitting in right now, would have higher benefits than the other option, which would be to find some enhancements for shelter. And since we rarely open the shelter, and we regularly open the Emergency Operations Center, we're working on potentially getting grant monies for some upgrades. Those funds are looking to cover things like a computer that could be put out here with multiple screens, moving the wires that you're tripping over under the floor and coming up under the table, along with a, with a telephone jack, our TV is no longer functional, and we do actually use that to look at newscasts when we're, you know, managing storm things and, and things of that nature. So the, the television was actually originally purchased with an EMPG grant, but again, it no longer functions. So those are the enhancements. The other thing that we were looking to potentially get to support the Emergency Operations Center was a handheld GPS unit, because when we have emergencies, one of the things that we're tasked with right after the emergency has started to abate, usually not before it's completely over, is we're tasked with doing a preliminary damage assessment. And that literally means that we drive every single road in town, and we look for damage that we can see from the public way, we take photographs of that, we log those photographs, and then we've had to go back later and figure out GPS coordinates, because that is something that FEMA is looking for in our reporting, so the thought was if we had a handheld GPS unit, it would make that process much easier.
And that's important, because if the governor issues a, an emergency.
Right, so typically, if the governor is gonna declare a state of emergency, we, we often declare a state of emergency, and that makes us potentially eligible for reimbursement funding after an emergency. And that's where the preliminary damage assessment is very important, because where they get their damage totals for the counties, and so in some storms, you may have just counties that are given that federal disaster declaration that makes them eligible, so that's why the preliminary damage assessment is very important.
That, remember that weird snowstorm we had Halloween? Huge amount of damage, and we, we involved a huge amount of town efforts and equipment and everything else, and we, we had to write everything down and, and keep good records, and then because of that, you then submit it, and we reimburse a substantial amount.
I wanna say, if, and don't quote me on this, but if my, my memory is correct, it was somewhere in the area of $90,000.
Ah.
Yeah. And ICEUS was also another big one, where we had significant damage in town and got a fair bit of reimbursement.
What's the, how much is gonna be applied for?
We don't have all the estimates in at this point, but you know what, it's $15,000, I, I think so, at the most.
I wonder if there's a camera with a GPS that just automatically stands its location? I mean, your phone works, but probably not if there's, if there's no service, then it probably wouldn't work, so, because I can't load the maps, or maybe there's a camera that has it. You guys figured it out?
I would think the same thing. I don't watch the location of every photo.
Right.
Yeah.
As long as it's.
And you, and you bring up a good point, because we've had, so I think it was that October snowstorm where phones, if they weren't on Verizon, they died, because there was no emergency generators or battery backup on the cell towers. So that is, that's important, and even Verizon was dying after.
Yeah, I wiped that thing off my memory.
And so, we, we get a vote.
We got, we get a call for a vote on that one, all in favor? Aye, seven zero. Good luck. Thank you. Now, we're gonna consider an act on adding First Selectman Rodney Fournier as a signer on the following resolutions. The Emergency Management Performance Grant, which, so is that one motion?
Good.
Ready?
I would make a motion, Mr. Chairman, if you would allow me to.
Yes.
That we would have our first selectman Rodney Fournier be added as a signer to the following resolutions. Number one, the Emergency Management Performance Grant, we previously mentioned, and number two, the EMPG Competitive Pool Grant, that says that there is no match required.
A second? Bob?
Amanda?
Amanda? She beat me. Amanda, Bob, Amanda, all in favor?
I'm sorry, I have to ask a question.
Yep.
So we're talking about this document that we've gotten in fact, right?
Authorizing.
It does not, this is just allowing him to be the signer, but it doesn't, it's not specific to that, this grant. I don't see anything in, it, it just, I don't see anything in here that refers to the particular grant that it's being applied for.
Well, this is also dated September 2019.
As a sample.
Sample, right.
It just refers to that, that the selectman may enter into, we have, delivered to the state of Connecticut, da, 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 any and all documents which are necessary, and then first selectman is authorized to execute, deliver any and all documents on behalf of them. So it's just, it's just very, very broad. I mean, this, this, I, I, I think that the resolution should refer to what we're authorizing the first selectman to, to exactly what we're authorizing him to do. Would, so I think that if there's two, there's a, we're talking about the Emergency Management Performance Grant and the EMPG Competitive Pool Grant, I think that both of those should be referenced in the, in the second paragraph that mentions Rodney Fournier and his first selectman, somewhere in there. Executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents relating to, and then list those two, the specific names and two bits, because otherwise, I mean, this could be, who knows what this really is for.
That's easy enough to put in there, it's a good, good form.
It just, it lists the two items that we were, we were following. Because it's a legislative one. So this, I believe this form came from the state, Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security.
Then we can't change it.
So I don't, I don't know whether we can change it.
But the motion was to allow.
We could, we could attach a copy of the motion to it.
Attach a copy of the motion to it, sign it at that.
The only, pardon, the only motion we have on the table at the present time is to allow Rodney Fournier to be the signatory on the resolutions.
That's it.
Is there an amendment to the motion that someone would like me to make? Can I do that?
When is the grant?
Tomorrow.
It's due next week.
Fifteen minutes.
Yeah, we gotta get it out. Are there other grants for which this would be confused with?
Only the Emergency Management Performance Grant.
Like there's multiple ones of those?
Those were, were constantly filling those out.
Is there any reason we wouldn't want him to be the signatory on all of those?
That's what this motion would allow him to do.
Does that resolve the issue or not?
Not in my opinion, no, because there might be something, I think we ought to know what we're applying for every time.
Fair enough.
So, so if, if, if they feel, feel appropriate for me to amend your motion, I, I could do that, or I'm like, I don't know, somebody else can amend somebody else's motion. You can't. Okay. Would you like me to? I would, at this point, Mr. Chairman, if my secondor would allow.
Sure.
I would withdraw my motion and turn my, turn the floor over.
My turn.
To Gwen.
Okay, so I, I would like to make a motion to authorize, let's see, to authorize, to pat, let's see, to approve the resolutions as presented with the addition of the language in the second, the further resolved paragraph at the end to read the Emergency Management Performance Grant and the EMPG Competitive Pool Grant. I don't see how it's different. Because, because this is, this doesn't say what grant you're authorizing him to sign for. It just, it just talks about...
Execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the board of selectmen.
Yeah, but for what, though? The EMPG?
The Connecticut Department of Emergency Services.
And the Competitive Pool Grant, two different...
You're saying add that?
Yeah, that's right. I just want to add the, the two specific grants that this, that this resolution applies to. So, delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents as related to the Emergency Management Performance Grant. I will second the motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
I have, I have a question, I have a question.
Okay. Before I tell you, go ahead, Board, ready?
The very, very first paragraph says that you can't alter this resolution.
I think we can't alter it once it's signed.
Yeah.
I did read that, but I think that, I think that means, once it's adopted and signed. There's also states I think that have to be corrected in there.
Okay, moving forward then. Do you have any other questions? Yes, motion passed, seven, zero. You still have your hand up, Board Clerk?
Yep.
Who did the second on that? Who was the second on that motion?
Pam Sawyer.
I, I didn't catch that.
Pam Sawyer.
Thank you.
So, moving on, Consider An Act on Historic Document Preservation Program Grant. And that's six E. Move forward with that, here, with the comment that we, fortunately, they grant on year after year, and it has helped dramatically to improve storage in, in that vault of documents.
Mr. Chairman, I would make, is that a, I'll make a motion then to, oh, allow the grant to be submitted in the amount of $5,500?
I'd like a second. I'll second that. Bob, yeah, is there any other discussion? Yes.
Where are these shelves going to go?
In the vault, I believe.
Some space?
Have you been in there recently? So, we, we actually had some work done with the grants that were received, you know, this fiscal year.
Some recondoing?
Yeah. We actually gave some older storage equipment to other towns.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor? Aye. I think seven, zero. Next, let's see, we got six, we got that, okay. It's reports and updates?
No, we added six G.
Very good, but, oh. Six G, add the 400,000 to the, to the Kappa, was it? For, to the category of... It was a big word.
Yeah, well, I have it in my notebook, I didn't remember the little words, but big name.
Consider an act on the addition of $400,000 to a new category in the capital improvement plan titled Planning and Implementing Improvements to Town Facilities, Infrastructure, and Operations. I'll turn that into a motion.
Second that one. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That's a seven, zero. I hope you got that down, Linda.
We have it in, in minutes.
Now, we'll move on to seven, reports and updates. Year ending, 24 budget reports.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion?
Yes.
Should we accept the budget report as presented this evening?
Is there a second?
I will second that motion.
Is there any discussion? Seven A.
All in favor?
Yeah.
I'm always grateful that the numbers are handwritten at the top.
Oh, yeah.
So, why is there an AP report here? Are we approving AP?
I believe we have to.
That's listed as seven A.
Seven A, it's just budget reports.
Budget reports.
And there's the budget transfers.
I think it's, it was supposed to be an AP.
It was supposed to be the, yeah.
I will withdraw my motion, and I hope my secondor would, would draw my second, and I would restate it that we accept the AP report as presented. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Now, is there any question? That was Tim seconding Pam's motion, and we're looking for comments. Or questions, or questions.
So, nine. We had a cordless phone and programming that cost $731.
Yes.
What kind of a phone is it? Does it talk to the moon? Yeah, apparently.
It's the, it's the only one we have in service, and we won't put anymore in service. It's at the senior center. It, it, it's been a source of constant difficulty.
Oh, okay.
But it allows them to be mobile within the space and still answer the phone. If they've got programs going on or things of that nature, they can take the phone with them. But it, it died, and it's expensive to replace and program.
So, all the rest are reported, is what you're saying?
I don't believe we own another cordless phone in town. There've been, there have been requests, and John has said, no, it's too expensive and too difficult.
I mean, is there a reason we didn't just get a senior center cellphone? Would that be more expensive than a lot of them? I just...
Well, because people call the senior center, her number.
You can program a cellphone to have the senior center number, I would imagine. I don't know, next time it goes out, we should just consider...
Thought, 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 we'll take it.
So, the Nachtra Municipal Center has one meter in it, I take it? On page seven.
I think that's actually...
It's like a $1,000 bill. Keep an eye on that.
I did go back and compare the last one, and it went down.
Did it?
Well, this would be the time of year we typically go down anyway, right? Because we're in between heating and cooling seasons.
Electric went down about 300, and heating, I think, went down about 1,200.
Part of the research, thank you.
So, they still have the lights on in there, right? Or that, that...
You know, John and I talked about that, and we decided to currently leave the water and lights on so that when we have a crew in there that is doing investigation or abatement, they have electricity, power could be important.
Right.
And maybe they can have a rest phone to use, which might be important.
Got it.
Amanda?
Page 12, the Narcan Training, we paid Pam for, I said Pam. Is that covered by the prevention grant?
Yes.
And then, page 14, there was service work on truck 134. Which truck is that, and what was the service for?
That was, that was an EGR valve, truck 134 is the latter.
Not the new one?
Not the new one. But the EGR, the EGR valve on that went bad, and it was pouring out smoke and had to be replaced. We originally had a much scarier estimate than this, it was about three times that cost, but...
It's one of those fine features that the government...
It's, it's required for emissions, but fire trucks spend a lot of time sitting and idling, and that does not do good things for the EGR valve. And I, I would like to just, you know, here, since you've asked a question about it, we'll give the chief some credit here, because he had the records of when this EGR valve was worked on previously. So, some of this work was actually covered under warranty from the previous work on it.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions? So, all in favor of approving the AP as...
Aye.
Submit, that's seven, zero.
Mr. Chairman, at this point, I make a motion that we accept the budget transfers as presented, number one through number 12.
Is there a second? Amanda? Is there any discussion? One through 12.
I think I did have a question, I think. Oh, yes. I'm sorry, unless I had a reference, I wasn't looking up. Oh, it's under, under note, number seven, the Conservation Commission. I don't have a problem with the amount requested, but I, I, I do want to note that it, the note says increasing clerk salaries was, salary was not properly considered in creating the 2024 budget. I specifically remember going, saying that the, that, that budget was fine. And then, I had a conversation with Rod Harley, the chairman, and he said to me, again, you guys didn't put the right amount in the salary. And I put, I, I pulled out the submission from the Conservation Commission and showed it to him, and I showed that he approved exactly what the commission asked for. So, I, I don't understand what, what the problem is here. Is that FY25,000 next year, and this is for this year's?
So, he was talking about next year.
Oh, all right. So, so this is, this is last year?
This was last year. And I think what, last year, we may have, the Board of Selectmen may have made a change to clerk salaries midstream.
Oh, okay.
Right, so we did, we did make an adjustment, I don't remember if that was, I don't know if Pam or Bob remember. Was it, but that was that last fiscal year?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we did make an adjustment to board clerk salaries. And so, we under, we understand that, you know, he's not the only boarder commission that might struggle with this a little bit this year. And I think you were confident on the communication that he and I had. And so, my hope is that they've taken that into consideration with next year's budget.
Okay, good. Yeah, thank you, Amanda, for pointing that out, that this is, this is last year, not, not, what'd you say? Submit your budgets, yes.
And thank you for taking care of Mr. Harley, Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Next is the minutes.
I forgot about those.
I guess we'd like to get rid of them so we don't see them again.
Yeah, you, you've got it.
Karen, I move the adoption of the April 2nd meeting, Board of Selectmen. Is there a second?
Sure.
Amanda's second. Is there any comments?
I have one.
Yeah.
On, under executive session.
So, page that, please.
Let's see, I will find which we, right at the bottom of page one, it, where it's talking about that I recuse myself, and it says, "And I'm also a personal friend of Attorney Hollister's." I believe it would be more appropriate to that read, "And she is also a personal friend of Attorney Hollister's." And, and then, under, on page five, under the administrative, administrative officer's report, just requested the correction of the spelling of Brent Mayerson's name in paragraph B, the 1, 2, 3, the fourth line down, it's M-A-Y instead of M-E-Y. And those are my own comments.
Is there any other comments?
No, I amend my motion, the rule goes correct.
Thank you. I will second the amendment.
All in favor? Aye. That's seven, zero. April 2nd has been approved. Now, we move on to April 9th, when somebody finds it.
I'll make a motion that we approve the special meeting, AP meeting from, approve the minutes on the special AP meeting from Tuesday, April 9, 2024, as presented.
Is there any discussion? I'll make sure. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ma'am, Mr. Chairman, you were not pressing the...
So, that's a six, zero vote, and one thing, that would be Rodney abstaining. April 13th meeting? See?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the Saturday, April 13th Retreat Meeting as presented.
Second?
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. That's seven, zero. Or into the April 16th, B.
I'll move this out now for you, April 6th meeting as presented.
One second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
And I abstain.
Amanda? That's five, yes, and Amanda and Pam abstain. Four E, which is the April 23rd.
Move the adoption of the special meeting of Tuesday, April 23rd, as presented.
I'll second.
Amanda's seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. And so, that's six.
How about things, John?
Six, yes, and one abstain.
I'm sorry.
Can't play. Uh, we've called town meetings. Okay, so now, we're down to, first selectman's report, don't really have one. I've been trying to facilitate helping with the notch road and going to these meetings, and there's a lot of them.
And you came to the supervisors' meeting?
And I was at the supervisors' meeting, which was very good, those, I thought those were, that was a lot of fun. There's a lot of good input. It was a little longer than I thought it was going to be, but I guess I get used to that. Went to the Fireman's Award Ceremony Sunday night, that was, that was quite rewarding, I'd say. A lot of, a lot of good award winners and a lot of great people. And I was trying to take it back when they say, "Thank you for coming," and it's like, wait, no, "Thank you for volunteering." So, I just kind of, but I appreciate all their thanks. And that's about it for now. So, now, Jim's turn.
So, I did provide you with a written report this month that violates... So I did provide you with a, a written report this month for the highlights. Uh, and I also included for you, just, you know, something for you to look at and read, you know, be aware of is the cost legislative update. You know, those are things that, you know, come to me through email. This time of year with some regularity and I thought, you know, some of these things may be of interest to you, both as selectmen and, and as citizens. So I thought it was nice to include that for you.
If I might add to that, that, uh, session is over tomorrow night and.
Thank God. You think?
We'll see what happens here and what gets put into the implemented bill could be anything and everything else. So it's not over till it's over. I guess through two chambers and I, I'm gonna have to sign and say yes.
Just Amanda has a question.
Amanda, yes.
What does cost stand for?
Council of small towns.
So.
So not every town in Connecticut can belong to cost.
Right.
There's a maximum number of residents.
Almost thirty.
It's, it's small towns.
There, there are a hundred and five out of a hundred and sixty-nine towns are considered small towns.
Somewhere in the season. All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions on anything I've included in the report this, this month?
Well, I have a question on, on something that's not included.
Sure.
Just, are we, did you receive your, uh, report from John Assessor yet, the summary of the?
I talked with him about it today. He's been ill, but he's finalizing it. So I should have that in the next couple of days. Something else that I will just add, you know, something you and I have communicated about over the last week is the overlay map that we asked the town engineer for regarding, uh, you know, the, the trail and the planned, you know, future improvements at the Heritage Farm. Uh, he, they did, Nathan L. Jacobs and Associates did have somebody working on it last week. I'm supposed to get a draft tomorrow and assuming that I approve the draft, it'll get me a final one hopefully by end of week. So I will have that for us to look at, review. And then, you know, our thoughts were, if everybody remembers, is that after we looked at that, you know, we would go back out to our second public informational meeting.
Walk.
And a walk right there, walk.
Yes, Amanda?
Um, question, the tour date for the town hall annex was originally the fourteenth, is it now?
Still is.
And we're, and if you wanna participate in.
Tuesday?
It's the fourteenth from two to six thirty.
Okay, maybe I was missing one.
If anybody wants to participate.
Did I, did I put it down wrong in my report?
No, I, this is from someone else who said it was now on Wednesday. So I will make sure that they know it's not planned.
We're all welcome to greet our, our tourist people.
And then I have another question. Oh, there was a bullet in here about conducting interviews and having an early match for an intern for next year. Is that like a broad intern or the finance intern we discussed? Only because I feel like that need potentially more discussion.
The administrative intern.
Yeah, that, that really, so what we, so what we went out for with the, you know, Yukon MPP program was for a, a student to assist us, such as like, you know, Josh Hall did this year.
Just making sure.
Right.
Okay.
Pam, you had a question?
Uh, the bid award notification to the auditor, what was the outcome? Select a new auditor?
No.
We had one response. Which is our current order. And the finance committee voted approve that with a couple of candidates. Uh, one was, um, if I remember correctly, one was meeting with staff and the finance committee at the conclusion and.
Starting earlier.
And starting earlier was the second candidate.
Oh, good.
So tho, those things have been communicated to the auditor. And the idea behind starting earlier was so that we're not trying to wrap up the audit while we're also preparing the budget. It gets, it makes stressful times more stressful.
And would you like to bring up the discussion with the church next door about their drill with the mother town?
Yeah, I just thought, I don't remember the date on that, but, um, the, the, the church next door to town hall was contacted by one of their parishioners who is a member of, I believe, the South Windsor SWAT team. And they will be doing a drill next door.
That was at Saint Maurice.
Nope, it's next door. They've already, they've already toured the building with the pastor. And they asked us if we had any questions or concerns. I said, yes, perception. We need to make sure people understand that this is a drill. And they said, we've done, they, they've been doing this every year in different locations for a number of. There are two real concerns. They took, they took the time to reach out with us and met with town staff before they met with Pastor Brandon. And we told them the two concerns based on what they shared with us were public perception. We wanted to make sure that it was well known that this was a drill, it was not a real event. And, you know, we, we'll be, yeah, we'll be able to put that out on our social media information and the Bolton Bulletin. But they also come with signs and they deploy signs all over the place that say, this is just a drill.
What's the point of the drill?
So, so they are prepared as a team, they haven't told us what their actual objective using this site is, but it's, it's for preparation as a team to practice. Sometimes they practice during rain, sometimes they practice during snow, sometimes they practice in the dark. And they choose different locations, I guess, based on variability of conditions. And they were looking for a place this year. And apparently one of the members who's part of the communications team, uh, is a parishioner. You know, in approach Pastor Brandon.
And I'd just like to add that, um, the new cemetery maintainer, the cemetery landscaping looks very good.
Excellent. He's only been on a couple of weeks, so that's good news.
Um, yes, Amanda?
Um, so as it relates to the novice work, we have a cyber attack response plan, but do we have like a disaster recovery plan and do they test it for us once a year and give us a report?
So we don't, we don't have that.
Oh, no.
That's what we're looking to build next year.
Oh.
That was one of the reasons that we asked you for some additional money, yeah.
Well, you have $15,000 from the auditor.
And the tree survey, is that, or the, is the cutting going to be, uh, just dead trees or is it going to be anything that's, it possibly would fall on wire?
So we don't typically cut the wire trees. That is typically ever source, the ever source, um, has a section of town that they're going to be working on this year. Uh, we can get you that information. I don't have that with me tonight. But the town also has a budget for cutting trees within its right of way. And typically we're focused on either dead trees or dangerous trees. Trees that might have a split on them, they might be diseased and dying and could be potentially. And so usually, so there's cutting that happens two or three times a year. Uh, and we try to put together a week's worth of cutting for the, the team that comes in. And so this, this year, they, we wait, we wait in the springtime until the trees start budding because it's, then we can tell what's dead and what's not. And so we just completed that tree survey and I think they're scheduled to come next week. So you'll see ASPUN around town over the course of the next week. But I will say that, you know, EverSource, we have a direct line to their forester. So if we ever have an issue with trees that we think might be compromising power lines, they are very responsive. And the forester usually comes out very quickly. So if you remember, a, a few weeks ago, we had a storm and we had some areas of town that were without power for a couple of days. Chubbles Road, interestingly enough, was one of those areas. And, um, there were some pine trees down there, very large pine tree that also took out a telephone pole. And we got a phone call from a couple of distant, different residents after that storm and said, geez, you know, we think that's a problem area. You know, can you get somebody to look at it? We asked the forester to go out, he was out within two or three days. He said, guys, you know, we, we actually cut this area last year. You know, we couldn't predict that this healthy tree was going to come down in a storm. Um, but this area is really pretty good for now. But he took the time to get out there and got back to us very quickly. So it's nice to have that kind of a working relationship with the EverSource Forest.
They've taken down a ton, they've taken down huge number of trees that were like questionable, looked like their area could have been ours. And they, they're very good about that stepping up for and save the town some serious dollars.
We had a, uh, a neighbor of mine have brought back, of course, he asked, worked for EverSource and he couldn't get them the budget, I thought it was very funny. He had a tree and he, he knew that it had a rock going up through it and it didn't show from the road. He could see it from the back. And it was very important that we got that down. And what a mess. It is a good thing we got it done. Because it's right by Transformer.
I have an unrelated question about something I'm wondering if we want to talk about at a future meeting. Um, I don't think that we as a board have discussed any of the tragedies that happened on Bolton Lake. And it's my understanding that maybe the second one may have been somehow motivated, motivated by the first or spurred by the first because of what was in the, the media the first time around. And just wondering if there's anything we think that we should be doing in terms of signage and safety or, because it is, you know, bringing some bad PR to like one of the highlights of our town. And I mean, they're, they're very unfortunate deaths, but just wondering if we need to be giving it any more consideration. So.
And, uh, Sharon?
Yes.
Um, and will, will we be having a shredding day in June, as we've had in the past?
There is a shred event scheduled that's been advertised. I don't know when it is off the top of my head.
I missed it, sorry, thank you.
It, it hasn't happened yet. But it's coming.
So there is also three trees coming down at the cemetery up here. That are.
That are breaking up the wall.
Two are destroying the wall and one is just dead. Uh, and I did attend uh, the hearing, public hearing for the sighting council. I did get on. They had quite a few speakers, probably thirty, and I managed to get the number two spot.
Thank you.
I was able to get my piece in, just pretty much recited our motion and the other nice little comments for them and moved on to let the other twenty-eight people to speak. Did it for midnight?
Did they make any decision?
Uh, no, they're, it was until September something, I think it was, I saw, yeah. Uh, is there anything else?
Now I'll move the motion to adjourn.
AP meeting?
You just said the time?
Tuesday, May twenty-first.
Six thirty, six?
Six.
Don't we usually do six?
We try to do, I prefer six if you can, because I get home, I'm generally on time that day, but it, it depends on the availability of the board.
Just, oh, that's our firm, okay. Just trying to figure out why it was a familiar day.
We still want to pay our.
If it's six, that means I can't be waving until it gets dark, just to be clear, or it's going to be eight eighty. Oh, Amanda. Oh. My bright yellow.
I thought, I thought we bought signs to wave for you.
We did have signs.
But I have a bright yellow one and I stand there and I tell them to go.
What they, what they.
Tuesday, May twenty-first.
Yes, it's work.
Oh, that's the same day of the.
It is.
Okay.
I don't believe that people read it. I mean, I do, but I'm walking the dog.
Uh, all right, six o'clock for five to.
Six.
Six?
Who's going to deploy the pink signs?
Oh, that's usually the chairman's first selection.
No, I got four though.
Okay. You gotta, that'd be the first selection.
So now, well, we're.
Okay.
The shredding event is fifteenth of June, Saturday, the fifteenth of June.
Fifteenth, that's right.
I'll second Bob's motion, let him try.
Oh, thank you, I'm waiting. Let's go, let's go. All in favor?
Hi.
Seven zero.
Man, let's get this one passed, thank you, everybody.
Turned at seven, eight forty-five, eight forty-five.